Not quite as comfortable, they're a little more stable.
My first time staffing the zoning board meeting and we all were standing up for the pledge of allegiance. So I. Yeah, I didn't go over with it, but the chair.
Alright, so it is six thirty and I will call the planning board meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to order. I will begin by reading the roll. Rebecca is excused this evening. Phil?
Here.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
Mark is excused this evening and Susan?
Yes.
And myself, I am present. And alternates Zach Terrell of select board. Michael Bouchard. And Peter.
Here.
So Peter, given we have a couple of absences this evening, I'll see you as a voting member this evening. So to begin, we'll start with our review of minutes of our December first meeting. Which you should all have a copy of, yes? So I looked over these, I did not even see my normal little minor grammatical things.
Rebecca's usually good at catching a few things, too.
She is.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Steep.
Alright, the meeting, the minutes are approved as written. Have there been any communications received?
There has been a communications received and it was sent out to the board, I think, yesterday or a couple of days ago. That was a letter from the water and sewer district and it was CC'd to the planning board. It relates to a later case, so we can read it later or I could, you know, share it with the board now.
We can probably save it for when we get to that.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so next up are applications and public hearings. We have an application for an extension of a site plan approval for Dragonfly Property Management LLC to construct a self-storage facility at parcel one oh four, oh one eight, oh oh one, Hitchner Road. The property is located in the industrial and commercial development zone. Conditional approval is set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And so this was a previously approved site plan and, yes, we're considering an extension and having a public hearing about this extension. So, if anything the staff would like to say before we?
Yeah, nothing particular. You know, we've, we've been in contact with the applicant, we let him know that his site plan approval was nearing expiration at the end of this month. So he did submit the request that you have in your packet for an extension to take some additional time to, to move that project along. This was approved in July of twenty twenty-one. It was an application to build units of self-storage on the property on Hitchner Road. And this was conditionally approved at that time, so this is just a request to extend that conditional approval for an additional year.
Do we have the applicant?
I'm here.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Generally speaking, what happened last year was I went out to get site work done. I could not get a hard date as to when they would come and deliver complete site work. The way self-storage works is you order a prefab building. When the building shows up, so does the construction crew that puts it in place. There was a three thousand dollar penalty per week that if it was not due on the time that the prefab buildings would show up, I would start incurring three thousand dollars a week. So as the year went on, I, I could not find a hard commitment on a date from site plan. This was a sort of crazy season, as you know, the real estate market went wild for a period of time and now it's dead. So I got into my season. So I, I really didn't have much time to work on this once I had gotten to the heart of my season. The one thing I want to point out to the board is that going forward, I'd like to go forward with the, the site plan as is. However, prior to doing this plan, I took a amount of capital, put it in the stock market, let it sit there for the, the project. I don't finance anything. I, I basically pay cash or I don't do it. As you know what happened with the market, it went up and it went down. And I'm now looking at a deficit in that capital fund. I'm kind of weeding that out. So what I'm asking for today is an extension with the possibility I may come back and downsize the size of the project because instead of financing the difference, I'd rather do a smaller project and add on later than to go show up at the banks when there are seven percent interest for commercial loans, so.
That potentially means you're probably still be, if that happened, you'd still probably be following basically the site plan, but maybe just kind of doing it more incrementally?
There was four buildings, so depending on the extent of the deficit at the time that I go to build it, that would mean that, you know, building four or possibly even building three would come on at another time. It, it just, I'm, I'm a rather practical guy. I'd rather wait and do it with capital than to go get a note.
And can I just ask while we're here? Have most of the conditions of approval from the initial approval last year been met for the escrow agreements and all that kind of stuff?
So basically what I did is I stopped at, we removed the trees, but at the time of removing of the stumps, I would have to do the, the escrow agreement. And then, well, the plan was basically put the escrow up and then have the, the work, the site work done immediately. And then upon the, the completion of that, get the, the escrow money back for the project because I do need that capital for the project. Since I ran into the issue with the, the site work, I held off on posting the bond because I couldn't move forward.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board? Mike?
How long of an extension are you requesting?
I'm asking for a year.
I have a question. Do you plan on following the same footprint?
As in the original design?
Yes, so, so the idea would essentially have the same plan, it would just that one, possibly two, depending on where the, where the market is, of those buildings would have to be for a future expansion. And I, I don't know exactly the procedures, but I would come back here, if, if in a reserve, I was going to build two or three out of the four, I would come back here and explain what my, my plans are at that time. It's really just, you know, if, if I liquidate my, my stock account, the loss becomes real. I'm just kind of waiting it out. And given that the market dropped eight hundred points today, I'm afraid to even look as to what's going on with, with, with my account. But the whole purpose of this, my, my purpose of this was to get money out of the stock market into real estate and I missed my window. And now I'm taking a beating.
Any other further comments or questions from the board? Before we open a public hearing? No? Okay, so we're just gonna, at this point, we're gonna open a public hearing in case any members of the public have anything to say or questions. And then we'll return to our own deliberations. So it is currently six forty and I'll open a public hearing. Does, do any members of the public have any comments? Yes, please identify yourself and walk up to the mic.
Hi, Matt Yeton. I support Dragonfly in these requests since the beginning of the procedure that he's been going through a couple of years ago to go through this. He's adequately shown, you know, what he needs and has been more than helpful presenting to this board their requests. So I support his requests.
Thanks, Matt. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so it is six forty-one and I'll close the public hearing. So how do we feel?
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move that we grant the one-year extension to the site plan approval that was granted. So the expiration date will be December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to grant the extension. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it is approved. Thank you. Congratulations. Alright, so. My paperwork's sorted out here. So up next. We have a request from Jeff Hiltz on behalf of the ownership entities for Chedarin, Chedarin Lane, Ski Lift Lane and Point of View Drive for approval of changes from the approved plans, including a cul-de-sac in Chedarin Lane, a cul-de-sac on Point of View Drive and a fire cistern. And so we had a discussion about this, I believe, one month ago. And so we're here now for a public hearing and to further discuss this. And we also, in the interim, have, hopefully the board has received, have this plan here and, yeah. Would the applicant like to present anything? Is this identical to the ones we have here?
No, no, I.
Is it updated one?
Yeah, it's updated, the name changes. By the way, in fact, Matt. But then.
Parker Street's down there.
Yeah, Parker Street's actually down there. And then.
You have a book here?
Yeah. This is pretty steep.
And this is a, this is, is a project that has, I think originally started in nineteen eighty-eight, which was a subdivision for George Greer that came off of Parker Street and, you know, had ten or eleven lots in it at the time. And he sold some of those lots. Later on, there was, there was another phase done that, that did another, I don't know, dozen lots or so that extended that up, extended the road up. And that basically, it extended it up to the kind of the junction of Chedarin Lane and Ski Lift Lane, extended it up and did those and did these, basically these lots in here. Then a few years later, the rest of it was done and it extended out to Point of View Drive and also extended Chedarin Lane out to Thurl Street. These were approved in, like I said, nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, was the first one. And then the second one was in two thousand and two or three. And then the last one, I think, was in two thousand and five. And as I, as we understand it, the difference is that we talked about is there were two cul, there were two cul-de-sacs on the plan. One of them was there basically at the end of the subdivision that was done, originally George Greer's subdivision in the beginning of Phase Two. When they built that road, instead of having it, that basically was going to be there for a temporary thing because that was the end of that phase. And then when they constructed the road, they just constructed the road through that cul-de-sac. So the need for that cul-de-sac, what there's a turnaround, was no longer there, although physically it exists on the ground. It's not paved, but it's, it's physically there. And so that was one of the, that was one of the changes, which at the time that was done, I think, you know, Mr. Hiltz, who was, who was doing it at that time, Jeff Hiltz had come in and bought the rest, remaining property and some of the lots of Mr. Greer's original development. And he met with the town and I believe S E A, who was the review engineers at the time, and they went over that change. And there was no longer need for that cul-de-sac because they were going to go on and connect up at Ski Lift Lane. Now it's going to be the end of Phase Two. And the, on the, the original approved plan, which we have here, the, there was a cistern. It actually wasn't shown as a cistern, it was just shown as an easement area that was on the opposite side of the road of where the, or kind of adjacent across the road from where the cistern is located now. And because the, of, of the way that they laid that out when they did Phase Two, that right-of-way in that area was wider than fifty feet. And there was room to put the cistern where it's shown now. And it was in an area, the other, where it was, the original easement was reserved, was, which, which shows on this original approved plan. If you will, sorry, I only have, have a couple of these, but actually it was, was actually, the original cistern was shown, easement was actually shown in that area right there. That was a little wider in there and it was, that was, at that time, he went over it with the fire chief and it had a letter that stated that they moved it over there because there was a better location for it. And it still falls within the right-of-way of, it falls within the right-of-way of town. Excuse me. The third change was the other cul-de-sac at the end of Point of View Drive. When that was constructed, they decided it fit the land better to do a hammerhead design instead of having the whole circle up there. And also at the time, that was, that was reviewed by, I think it was S E A.
It was also a request of the fire chief.
Yeah, okay, and so that was constructed in, in that area. Those were not, those weren't shown that way on the original plan because they weren't built then. And so I guess at this point, and the other thing is, right now, Mr. Hiltz is going, working with the select board, going over things to take the road over. As it's, you know, predominantly the all phases of the subdivision are built out and have been since, I don't know when he originally paved the road, oh five or first time?
I think it was oh seven.
Okay. So at this point in time, we're working with selectmen to take, to take over that town as a town road. And the, the, as I understand it, the request from the planning board was to, to show that those changes that hadn't originally been approved by the board. So basically, we're here now to say, is it, you know, to get approval for those as, in their as-built locations.
Thank you. Yeah, so as we just heard, so our charge here is to get a full record and as-bills of all these changes that were not in the original application. And eventually, the select board will have to, you know, be more in charge of taking over the town, road as town roads, which is not our prerogative here. And I have a few more comments, but I think first, are there any questions or comments from other members of the board?
I guess I have a question about the plan. At, at one point, I think at our last meeting, somebody had mentioned there was a retaining wall on the right-of-way. Is that what's shown at the intersection of Ski Lift and?
It was a little further up the road.
Is that this area?
That's that one there, yeah. That's that one there, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think we had also talked about, um, that a final plat for this would include, um, utilities and, um. Water, sewage and, um, a- as per the, um. The final plat requirements in the, um. Subdivision regulations and I don't think I'm seeing some of that here and I'm just wondering, um. I mean, it's, it's, in, in some ways, I think that's important, not only for us to record a final plat, to have those details. But also obviously for the next step when it goes to become potentially a town road and they also have those, um, and I believe they asked for those details as well.
Uh, I, yeah, no, not too. I think, I think those are things that we are going dealing, as I understand it, dealing with through the selectman's office in terms of what they're requiring for the road acceptance. If that's.
That's my understanding according to the application to the selectmen.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'm just looking at our own requirements for the, um, for the final plat for a, um, for a subdivision and it, it, we usually request that information on our final plat to record the subdivision in our own records.
Right, yeah, um, well, part of the issue here is there are three separate subdivisions. Done by three different entities. So it's, uh, it's difficult to have. If I produce a plan that shows all of that, basically I have to resurvey the whole thing. And that's pretty costly and I don't know if that's necessary for getting the, to what the town needs, what the select board needs to accept the road. And it, what, what we have tried to do is take the original approved plans and kind of duplicate that graphically on, you know, my composite plan to show what was here. Not trying to get out of work, but that's, that's basically the, it in a nutshell, it's, uh. You know, if one entity done the whole thing, it makes it a little easier, but I can't just make a plan and stamp it and say these, you know, because then I'm liable for everybody's work and that, but I really don't want to be liable for it. Not that I have anything reason to doubt it, but.
Are there any further questions or comments? Oh, Joseph, do you want to address the letter from Water and Sewer?
Yeah, so we did receive a letter or actually it was a lot of it is C C to the planning board. So, you know, we did share with the board and I don't know if folks have had a chance or if they'd like me to just read it out for the benefit of the public as well. Essentially for the board, but essentially it says that, you know, that the acceptance of the road as town road does not necessarily entail the acceptance of the, the sewer utilities, uh, within the development. And that those are, you know, subject to the, any separate process from the Water and Sewer Districts Board, um, and recommend, you know, at the end of their letter, they recommend the creation of an association. To hold and oversee the maintenance and repair of the private sewer lines, uh, in the development.
I don't, I don't think, for me, it leaves any way, I don't need to hear the whole thing read out and that's basically what I remember reading.
Excuse me, Jason, I'm, uh, Joseph, my apologies, can I get a copy of that? I've not seen that.
Yeah, it was sent on December ninth, I can certainly give you a copy as well, yeah, there should be some extras.
Just one right here, yeah.
It's actually addressed to you.
It is addressed to you, yeah.
Yeah, it's addressed to you.
It's my first time heard of this, but I appreciate it, man.
Looks like it was sent on December ninth, uh, via mail and email and C C to the Plymouth Planning Board.
Thank you.
And since they did C C it to the board, we, we felt it, you know, was appropriate to share with the board and, and make sure that everyone was also aware of this, this element that is, you know, sort of distinct from the town's own process.
I will also remind everyone, we do also have staff recommendations, um. Quite extensive staff, staff recommendations, um. Yeah.
Where, where does the sewer line run? Kind of like up there. Where does the sewer line run? Because my understanding is there's a sewer line that goes up through there?
The entire subdivision.
Where does, is it, is it in the road, beside the road?
It's in the road.
It's in the road?
Yeah. As, as Kevin had pointed out, George Greer initially brought the sewer onto the property after the beginning of Phase Two. And then we extended it from there up around and then around, around the, the balance of something.
And there's, is there documentation of all of this?
I'm sorry?
And there's documentation of all this and where it runs and.
It all had to be submitted to the, the sewer precinct for approval and was also submitted to the state for, for district. So yes, that was all around here as well.
And there's not currently an H O A up there, is that right? A homeowner's, okay. So I guess the only question that I would have is in the event something happens to that line and the road, if the road gets taken over. And the road has to be dug up to fix the line, who would be responsible for putting the road back, I guess?
I, I, I had a conversation with the precinct and, uh, they had recommended that I send a letter if you were trusting that, or to take it over.
To do it?
We're in the process of doing that now.
Oh, okay, so the precinct would be taking that over?
Well, that's, that.
That's what your hope is?
That's, that's what, that's what they suggested is that we write a letter addressing that fact and then they would just get back, just, you know.
Okay.
But in the meantime, if something happened to it.
It's you.
It's you.
Thank you.
And in some ways, eventually that'll be a select board issue. The question for us is, um, we do have some of these requirements of our regulations as well in accepting, um, a final plat and. How do we want to address that? Want to hear, um, do a public hearing before we continue our own comments or questions?
If it's been noticed, I think we should.
Well, we obviously will at some point, yeah, but the question is ti- timing.
Um, okay. Peter, did you have something?
Well, in that case, um. It is currently, uh, six fifty-eight and I will open a public hearing. Are there members of the public who would like to, um, speak to this, um, application and if so, please identify yourself and come up to the microphone?
Hello, my name is Sharon DiMarco, I own, uh, one point of view, um, up there and that wall, I've been told. That the selectman wanted to come down before his road can be taken over by the town. I wanted to go on record that I'm not taking down the wall. I put the wall up before the house was there, we did blasting, we did excavating, thousands of dollars for that wall, it's like a hundred, a hundred and fifty-foot wall. Then, uh, Mr. Hiltz came to us and said something about drainage and silk and all this other baloney and we had to do more work. Then about a week ago, I received a letter from his attorney, um, telling me that the selectman had requested the wall to be taken down. The wall is on my property. I have endured the cost, the aggravation of this wall. The material that the wall is made out of came from that site. We had to do blasting because it was a big ledge of ledge rock so that you could see the house. The wall is the first thing, it's been better than a year. I've owned the land since two thousand and twelve. During the entire construction of the wall, the house, everything that needed to be done, excavating up there, no one mentioned anything about this wall. So I don't know if I'm at the right board, I don't know if I should be at the selectman board, but I wanted to go on record that as the property owner, I am not taking down that massive wall that I've spent thousands of dollars on.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. I, I mean, I think in some ways this probably is more of a select board issue. We're looking for documentation of current conditions and, which in, which include that wall. And I think whether or not.
Well, there's plenty of space, there's plenty of space on the opposite side of me, there's a lot that is not developed, there's no home on that lot, it's still for sale. The same conditions look very similar, actually they look better than when I bought that lot. But, um, it, right away, there's plenty of property in the town of Plymouth that include, that, their houses, garage, roads, driveways, all encroached on right-of-ways. There's hundreds of examples. So I just want to go on record to say I am not taking down any wall.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this P A system working? Because I can hardly hear you back here.
Oh, are we not?
No, this, this, I don't think this thing is.
Test, test.
Hello?
Oh, there we go, how's that?
Okay, well. I've been told I don't need a microphone, so maybe we'll do that.
Lately these have been very sensitive, I actually pushed it away a little further, but I guess they're not quite as sensitive tonight.
My name is William Kendall, I live at nine Carmel, my, the back of our property backs up to Chatteran right at the intersection of Thurlo. And when I received the letter last week or so from the town, um, it says a cul-de-sac on Chatteran. Now, I think that's where the fire installation is, at the bottom of Ski Lift?
No, the, the, they're talking about, uh, I want to go for a, uh, if you have.
Yeah, that, because these, that, that, that should be here. Because if you're not sitting here, as far as I'm concerned, you can't see that, but anyway, that's crazy.
So I'm just trying to figure out where the, is this proposed, including a cul-de-sac on Chatteran?
These are both, yeah, they're all, yeah, they, they're all, yeah.
Where's your cul-de-sac on Chatteran?
Well, it's, the first one was here, that was Chatteran Lane, that was the one all the way through and comes out Thurlo's over here.
Do you have a map that shows where it is on Thurlo? I mean, I'm just trying to understand this.
Well, not on this, but I do have one here that goes.
It's only about fifteen hundred feet up Chatteran from Parker Street, it's on the opposite end of where you think.
Right, you're over, you are over here.
I'm right here.
Right.
This, right. Well, I'm not, I'm not loving, but I want to.
Right, right, okay, you're right there.
Yeah.
This cul-de-sac is way down. You're, you're on here, you're off the plan.
Yeah, alright, yeah.
Okay.
I've been told that.
This is the cul-de-sac that they're talking about that's on Chatteran Lane.
Oh, which isn't there.
Well, the road is built here, actually the cul-de-sac is flattened out, but the pavement is there.
Okay.
And that's what they did, they put, they didn't construct the paved section out of it. And you get in a, you get a notice because you were about the subdivision.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good, thank you.
And we do have a, just, uh, we do have a number of folks on Zoom, so if, uh, you know, if you could just make sure too that we're, uh.
Okay.
You know, if we have comments, making sure we have a microphone near us because it is, uh, I want to make sure everybody on Zoom is here as well.
And, and as well, if you, if you see any comments on Zoom, of course, let us know. I, I can't really like tell from here.
Hi, um, I'll turn this way so you can hear me, I tend to talk a little soft, my name is Linda Smithurst, I live at forty-nine Chatteran Lane. And, um, we received this notification last week and, um, actually it came as a surprise to us. But we came tonight for information, but also, um, you know, after hearing a neighbor speak about the work that she's done on her property, we've also done work on ours. And that's obviously a concern because that is, uh, monies that we have invested into our properties and we just want to understand, I can see. So I looked at the plans and, um, if you, so we're down near that cul-de-sac. And, uh, if you move the, uh, road out or I guess that's how I'm interpreting this plan, if you move the road out and I'm assuming that the plan is to pave over that grass area? No?
No, that, that was eliminated there.
Okay, so.
So what, what it says right now is what this as-built plan represents.
So not, not this, something else? So not this, something else?
No, no, that, that, that plan, it represents, it is what's all as-built, so, so as you drive the road right now.
Yep.
Is what that plan represents.
And will it remain that way?
Well, that's.
Okay, alright, that's, I just wanted, as you could tell, I was, uh, concerned because it's for a layperson, you know, that, that's why I'm here to understand what is proposed up where we live. So I guess for, for me, um, you know, the, the conversation was possibly going to select board meetings, is that the recommendation from this board here?
Well, this is, this is a multi-part process. The applicant would like to have the roads become town roads. And that's not a planning board issue. This is a subdivision from, as you heard from quite, quite a long time ago and several changes have been made. That were not recorded along the way, um, and permission came from different places that were not the planning board, but that's supposed to go through the planning board. And we're kind of trying to document all of that and get everything tied away into final as-bills, um, as required by our regulations. So we're not really looking to necessarily change anything, but record the changes that have been made since the original, um, application.
Alright, I thank you for the clarification because as I said last week, we received the notification and we just.
This doesn't clarify anything, but all the changes that were made to the project, to the road project, which for three, it was the elimination of a cul-de-sac. And, and it was just a constant curve within as opposed to the cul-de-sac. And then at the top of the hill, it was supposed to be a cul-de-sac here from the fire chief that requested a hammerhead. And the third change is just the relocation of the cistern, which really is still, it, it's all still within the right-of-way, so it doesn't change any lot lines from when it was originally some point.
And I will just remind everyone, if we're gonna have like conversations, I'll try to bring them to the, um, lectern.
Excuse me?
If we're gonna have conversations, just try to make sure when we're speaking, we, um, speak in, in front of a microphone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do have someone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have someone on Zoom who would like to speak.
Yep.
Dan Marion, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak.
So, Dan, um, comments?
Hi, this is actually Christine Marion, I'm on my husband's computer, so it shows as, as Dan. Um, I'm a resident nineteen Point of View Drive and I appreciate Mr. Hiltz bringing the amended subdivision plan to light. One thing I did not see and we were hoping, uh, to see more details on the plan itself other than just the road and the right-of-way. We had a concern with the change from the cul-de-sac to the hammerhead because originally the subdivision plan showed a drainage easement onto our property. And I know in June's letter dated October twenty, uh, twentieth, twenty twenty-two, it stated that, um, one of the items to be addressed was the extinguishment of that drainage easement, is that still the case?
Would you like to speak to that? Actually, can you come up to the, uh, microphone?
She, she can't really hear unless you're in the mic.
Once the planning board has accepted and approved those, the changes that were submitted tonight, uh, that, that drainage easement would be extinguished and it'll be just a matter of just amending the deed.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there further public comments? Yes.
My name is Christian Besson and I reside at forty-one Chatteran Lane. And what I understand tonight of that letter from the water board is that possibly the street would be accepted as it is, but not the sewage in the water line, is that correct?
It is correct that it, um, the, the letter does say that, um, the acceptance of the road, which is by the select board.
It's implied, it's implied.
That's right, doesn't it imply that there's private, currently private sewer lines would, because that, they have a separate board of directors and process.
So, my concern again, that it seems that this town with all these different boards is trying to push, you know, the goalpost again for Chatteran Lane. Isn't it? There's always somebody that says, well, Mr. Hiltz does this, it's great, but if we don't have all the drawings and all the acceptance for the water board, we can't accept, you know, the street. So we're still the same position as resident of Chatteran Lane. Isn't it?
I, I understand your frustration there and I'm, this, this board can't, which is your frustration, of course, can't really address that issue. With the acceptance of water and sewer as public.
So without you, I thought, I'm surprised that this town, that they have all those board working together for this project and make it happen. I mean, are you like that separated? And you have this conflict of interest and you say, I will accept it for the street as it is, the cover, the pavement. But not to know, this other board will say, not the sewage and not the water line. So if we have any damage, you know, sewer and water line, who do we call? We don't call the city because they say, that's not their street. The top is a street, but not underneath. So what you call Mr. Hiltz, Mr. Hiltz, can you come and fix the sewage for us? Is that what be the reason, the, the process?
I mean, as, as long as they're private, that is not really a town issue. If they get accepted as public, then it becomes a town issue.
So the town, the, the water board says the solution would be for her street with others then to create, you know, an home association. Now, if we do that, I bet you one of the first actions we're gonna take as a home association is to bring a lawsuit against this town.
Mike?
Can I make a comment?
Probably Neil should address this.
Okay, Neil?
The Water and Sewer Commission is a completely separate entity with a state charter, completely separate from a town's charter. So we have no authority over water and sewer whatsoever. We have to try to work with them.
Wow. So you build a street with sewers and water underneath, put a pavement over it, and they're not, not together as a project? Somebody explain that to me.
Thank you.
In terms of land development.
Yeah.
When this project started, all of these entities you're speaking of.
Yeah.
Indeed, were aware of the project.
Yes.
And they all had their own subject matter to review, approve, et cetera, issue permits.
Yep.
So everybody was well aware. One could say they were working together, but they're not together in the sense that it's city water, city sewer, or town water, town sewer, town road, BTW, et cetera. As Neil just explained, they're separate.
Okay.
But just like a subdivision with this many lots requires, well, if it was broken up, probably maybe not, but it has state approval as well.
Yes.
So there are many, many entities all the time, as if there, I mean, there was wetlands, I remember. So there's Wetlands Bureau, many, many permits, many, you know, this is just the way of land development.
Yeah.
The unfortunate part is time. Time has been.
I know.
Everybody's, right, challenge.
Yep.
And so throughout that time, each board, each entity, as it occurs to me, never really received all the documents to complete the process. What I mean by complete the process is close out, for example, for this board, for the subdivision plan, for the documents that show the road design, the water design, the, the, all the utilities, stormwater drainage, like Ms. Marion just spoke of the drainage easement. If that's gonna be distinguished, the board needs to know what was changed there. Was the grading changed? Is there no longer an outlet or, or was it now closed drainage or what happened? So to use the expression, right, dot the i's, cross the t's.
Yeah.
That's unfortunately what has happened over time. And I'm sure Mr. Hiltz and Mr. French are trying to do the best they can to catch up and get all the paperwork in. And that's the process every one of us, including the town, is subject to right now.
Well, that's what concerned me is that, I wonder what the town is doing, you know, to make this happen. Do you have any kind of way to, you know, say, let's wrap up this, this street with all the required, you know, permits and information that you need to make this, you know, a done deal? Because how long has this been here? Since nineteen eighty-eight?
Well, I mean, I think everyone in this, I, I can't speak for everyone, but I mean, I would sue many of us in this room do want to close out this deal and, and, and help make this happen. On the other hand, as Peter was very, very well articulated just now, it's a complicated process.
I know.
Some of those i's and t's were not dotted across.
Yeah.
And now we're trying to kind of piece this back together for the final documentation for us.
Yeah.
And as it goes to other boards as well.
So, so what are you gonna do as a planning board to make this happen? Are you gonna take initiative and work with, you know, the water board and, you know, any other entities that need to be involved to make sure that this is finished? Because you're the planning board. I know you're not the one that approved that street or those development initially, but now you're, this is your, this is your project now. It is yours.
It's really not. It's ultimately, it falls under the, I mean, we, we have the ability to approve changes to the plan, but in terms of implementation, that really does fall to the select board.
To which one?
To the select board.
Select board. So are you working with select board to?
But, but water and sewer is separate altogether. And, and I suspect that if, if a developer were to bring a new plan like this to the town and propose water and sewer lines, I suspect they could, I, I'm not, I was trying to see if water and sewer had any information about new connections. But, you know, I suspect that you could probably work with them, but I suspect that the developer would have to install their own water and sewer infrastructure. And then at some point, they would have to, you know, at the point that, that this project is at, they would have to, you know, apply to the water and sewer department to accept responsibility and take, take those over. But I suspect that there would want to be some details about what was built, you know, what's the system? Was it approved to be accepted in the, but, you know, it's kind of.
Does the water board as meeting with, you know, with public hearing?
Yeah, they are subject to the same right-to-know requirements than any public.
So is there a select board now involved or aware of what's going on with Chatterin Lane and the effort of Mr. Hiltz trying to get the pass, the street passed to us, to, to us as a city?
I mean, obviously, this is not a select board meeting, but if Neil, if you'd like to make any brief comments about that? Or, I mean, if you don't.
We need information here.
We're, we're trying. And we're trying to work with the planning board to get the details nailed down so that we can consider taking action. And we have our own engineer reviewing the state of the utilities and this, well, other than water and sewer.
Yeah.
The road. And the planning department is trying to coordinate all this information.
Yeah. Because when I met for the select board, you know, about a year or so ago, you know, they told me those are punch lists for Mr. Hiltz to finish. And I requested a punch list and I never received it. I went many times to this, this building here to ask, you know, for the punch list to have a sense of what's missing. And I was never given that punch list. But then I saw Mr. Hiltz this year, they really put a lot of money, a lot of effort to finish what seems like to be the punch list. But he's gonna finish his punch list, but then the street won't be adapted. Or if it is, it could be just a surface and not the sewage and the water system. So I'm like.
So, and so part of the issue for us is if this was a new application.
I know.
We would expect all of those utilities and everything to be in here.
Exactly.
And understanding it's a, it's a difficult process at this point, there is a real benefit to the town.
Oh, yeah.
Of us having a final document with all of that in there.
I understand that.
Especially if it's gonna be taken over as a public road.
Yeah.
As, as an end goal of this process. And so that's kind of, for the, for the planning board, that's kind of our, we, we can't really answer the questions of whether the, you know, select board or.
Yeah.
Water and sewer is gonna take, take over anything documented. We're trying to bring it all together. And after that long.
It's in the development, everything else. The road design, the sewer design and all of that was, plans were approved at the time that they were, it was, you know, the plans were approved by those entities at the time of the construction. And they were reviewed by the engineers at the time that they were installed. So those things, those things were done at the time that they were supposed to be done. And we are dealing with, and we are dealing with three different boards. We're dealing with you guys, we're dealing with the select board, and Mr. Hiltz is dealing with water and sewer. So what, as a part of the select board thing, I'm sorry, planning board thing that we're trying to do is go over the issues that were brought up about the two cul-de-sacs and the cistern. And basically, you know, ask for some type of consensus that yes, it's okay the way that those were constructed. And then we can go to the select board with that and, and, because their question can be, was the planning board up? We gotta, we gotta recreate this, but we gotta do it in some kind of order. So we started here and we're, you know, we're trying to work through this process with, which is why I noticed, make sure that we noticed all the rebutters for this one because I didn't want to go through this. And then notice I'm, and then had some other issue come up, so.
I mean, I guess when this goes to the select board and they want to consider whether or not to take over the roads, presumably, they're gonna need, I think I've indicated they're gonna need a lot of the same information that we often have documented on a plan. And so, I mean, it seems in some way like this information is gonna be necessary anyway.
It may be, but again, and I'm just, like I said, we want to go through the things that the planning board wanted on this plan, which, when we addressed them, they were the two cul-de-sacs and the cistern. There may be other things that come up when we go to the planning board. So basically, we're trying to do it in some type of order that, so that when it was all done, planning board's happy, the select board is happy, and the water and sewer department's happy.
Thank you.
And the residents.
And the residents. Yes, yeah.
Any further comments from members of the public? June? Do you have a comment?
Do you want to wait till the public hearing's over?
Yes, probably, probably so, yeah. So it is currently seven twenty-five and I am closing the public hearing.
Can I suggest that you maybe.
Close it for tonight with the possibility of extending it, depending on the outcome of tonight?
Yes, we, we may have to continue this public hearing if we don't come to a resolution this evening.
Did you have other comments, June?
A comment or?
So, sorry, I was, it's been a little hard to hear when people weren't at the microphone, so I didn't catch everything tonight. But I'm trying to think of, for, for the members of the public to understand, there's, you know, I think Peter said, said it pretty well. Over time, you know, there was multiple phases to this development. There was actually, I think, three subdivisions back in the eighties by George Greer, and then there were three phases, two by Hiltz Construction and one by Summit at Mount Frontenac LLC. So I just want to, as a, as sort of almost even a administrative issue is there is another party who's part of the summit of Mount Frontenac that has not been part of these discussions. So you really have two different owners there. The plan that was submitted for review tonight is really lacks details. I cannot see what Kevin submitted tonight. But, you know, the, the process that happens when any subdivision with a new road, you know, plan gets submitted, which was done back, you know, almost twenty years ago. And there's many details that are put together by surveyors and engineers. The surveyors lay out the lot lines, but the engineers really give all the details for the construction of the road. And that's usually multiple pages of exactly where the road layout's gonna be, where any drainage is gonna be, guardrail, curve data, that kind of thing. And so what happened is on the phase, first phase is there's that initial cul-de-sac that doesn't, isn't there, but it's that kind of grassy area we've heard about a little ways up Chatterin Lane. That was at the end of phase one. As phase two extended on up to what's now the junction with Ski Lift Lane, that cul-de-sac was removed, but we never got the i's dotted and the t's crossed. It's up to the developer to submit plans at the end of each phase to certify, and it's usually done by their engineer to certify that what they built matched the plan. So what Kevin's given so far isn't have enough detail for us to be able to say yes or no, that it matches the previous plans. The records of this are very messy, and that's, you know, certainly a concern. But we need to know what's called an as-built plan with many more details. I have in documentation, I believe it was from phase three, where the cistern was completely in a different location, you know, and it got moved for some reason. I don't think any of these issues are conceptually a big deal. But in order to know what the details are, you have to have an engineer, you know, certified plan that says this is what each phase was completed. And this is how it may be deviated from the plan and, and acknowledgement of that. So we know what's there and what got moved or changes. I mean, sure, things do change, but there should be documentation along the way. That never seemed to happen. With, the town did have a construction inspection engineer out there, but they, and they provided, we've got like eighty-five pages of notes during the phases of this construction. But there's never any approvals of the planning board saying, yes, at the end of phase one, you can get rid of that cul-de-sac and make it just a curve. At phase, you know, three, you can move where the cistern is for these reasons make sense. And you can change the cul-de-sac to a hammered head and get rid of that drainage easement that's now onto that lot. Those things are in the jurisdiction of the planning board to approve when there's deviations. So my, my recommendation after going through this and, and, you know, we need to have those details, the planning board does, just to set the record straight of this is what was built. In terms of the select board is, with the town's road acceptance policy is very clear, there's a variety of steps that go through that, and they're working through that. One is an inspection by the town's engineer, and he does have a punch list which we can provide. And one of the items is submitting as-built plans. So I don't, you know, the, the, the select board needs to see those per KV Partners memo. The planning board should see those for each phase of the two from Hiltz Construction and the one from Summit at Mount Frontenac. So I think in concept, this is all okay, but there's just not enough detail to document what's there on the ground. And for us to be able to, for us to be able to prove it, you know, the planning board and us being the town, we're not moving goalposts. We're following a very clear process that's laid out in subdivision regulations and the town's road acceptance policy. And, you know, over time, it is the developer's responsibility for providing documentation of what they actually installed. You know, so I don't understand what the, what the hurdle is there because you've got to do it, it's got to be done per the KV Partners' request of the select board too. So my thought, and I wrote us in a fairly long memo to you guys, to, you know, consider just postponing or continuing this hearing till, I'm working it out with Kevin and Mr. Hiltz to see when they can get an as-built plan with the details together and get that back to the board and then take a closer look at that with all the details at that time.
I mean, this, this is a complicated project. Thank you for all those details and recommendations. Members of the board have any comments?
We need to close, what, Karen, did you?
We continued, we're, we're potentially continued it.
There was no other public?
No.
So the, the changes made on this one, he made some changes on this one he handed out tonight, is that correct?
The one that was handed out tonight does have changes and more details than the one we were first given. It does not have all the details that we would normally request. And they're in their site plan, subdivision regs, page eight, nine through part of ten.
Joseph, can you tell us, is this the plan that June reviewed to provide this?
Yes.
Yeah, this is up until tonight, that was what we had.
All right.
So now we have slightly more details.
There is more detail on the plan this morning.
But still, some things that are potentially.
Hmm, yeah.
Mike?
So this is what I was kind of afraid was gonna happen. And we asked them, Jeff, to provide information that we needed. Sounded like the board was all happy once we got that and we could move them forward. Winter's coming. We get what we asked for and sure enough, oh, that's not enough. We need more. And I think whatever the select board deems that they still need. And I think whatever the select board deems that they still need can be worked out with the town engineer. I've never heard of a planning board seeing a development after it's already been built. Maybe Kevin has, who's been at this a lot longer than I have.
Thanks.
But I'd like to hear Kevin's input on that. I think we gotta move this along now and today. Let our engineer work with, with Jeff in the select board at this point. We've gotten what we needed, and yes, we could get more detail. We could have Kevin go out there and document every, every single item throughout the entire development of three, of three developers and three engineers and three surveyors, and yep, be some cost for Jeff and time wasted for, for the residents. There are residents, they're, they're one of us, and we're putting them through hell. Just, I'm not lightly using that word, it's, this is not easy for them, and for the planner to say, we need to just keep this going indefinitely, because we could, at the next meeting, ask for more information. So I'd like to hear from Kevin whether he's seen this before, but the houses are there. This is not a subdivision where we ask, do this and this to get your approval. We already gave them their approval. Years ago, we gave them their approval. This is the select board's job, I feel, to take it from here. I've never heard of a planning board taking it back. In which regulations, are they gonna use the regulations from nineteen eighty-eight or prior, or are they gonna use the regulations from now? Who's judging that? So I'd like to hear from.
Our subdivision regulations have not changed since this was approved.
They have not, and I believe we did, I mean, I don't, I can roll the tapes right now, I believe we did ask for documentation of utilities at our previous meeting, and it's in our regulations. Now, whether or not we're gonna hold to that, I mean, we can talk about that right now, but I don't wanna prolong this forever. And I am very sympathetic to members of the public and residents who live here. On the other hand, things weren't documented along the way, that's not our fault they weren't documented, and we should have some kind of record of some of this material, for the town's sake. This is important, important information.
Cistern was moved, and they got approval to move it from the fire chief, Buddy Tebow.
That's, that's in question. There is a question about that. If you read the planner's notes, with regard to the cistern.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'm sorry. Yep. I said that, the, the point about the question, according to the notes we have from the planner, there is a question about the moving, the, the cistern. The notes we have from planning staff indicates that there, there's, there are two pieces of information. There's a memo from the fire chief dated two thousand five, prior to approval of the planning board indicated he had reviewed the plans for the cistern at the original location. There was a subsequent note dated four, five oh seven suggesting the fire chief was requesting updated engineering plans for the cistern for the new location to ensure, amid fire protection regulations and the cistern agreement. There's no record of revised plans and details about the cistern being submitted and approved by the planning board, nor is there any record of a cistern agreement. So this is, this is information that the planner provided to us for this meeting tonight. Moving a cistern is, is, if it's proposed in one location and recorded that way, and it gets relocated, the plans that are now the foundation for everyone's deeds are no longer accurate. Even if it's in the right-of-way, it's still a new location. We don't, if you're, if you're asking the town to take over ownership of the cistern, and it's not documented as to how it was built, it may be built the exact same way, we, we just don't know.
Can I speak to that just quickly on one item?
That's one of the items that, that we have, that's been pointed out, so if you'd like to speak to it, please come up.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say in reference to the installation of the cistern is, I paid the engineering fees to your engineer to inspect all that work, and somewhere in June's paperwork, there's gotta be documentation that it was, it was installed correctly.
So are.
And also, I'm sorry, but just one more thing if I could.
Please, go ahead.
And I also submitted to you folks last month, a sketch that we had submitted to Brian Tebow, the chief at the time, with his stamped approval and signature for the new location.
Okay.
But that's.
But it was still never, the, the fire chief approved it, but it was still never recorded on a plan that way? This, this is the most, this is the first plan we've seen with that cistern in the, in the current location, right? Am I correct about that?
As far as an as-built is concerned, yes.
Okay.
But we did, we did submit quite a while ago, a, a plan to the chief, which I assumed was forwarded to the planning board from him, it wouldn't, wouldn't come from me.
The, the fire chief doesn't have the authority to amend planning board plans.
Yeah, but in, in, in reverse of that, though, you would go to him to get his approval for that.
Sure.
So I don't see the difference. Anyway.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board?
So there was an engineer on site at the time that was inspecting all of this stuff, is that correct, June? Can she hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Um, yes, we had, at the time, an SEA consultants was the engineer, and there are, you know, again, there's pages and pages, so I can't here tonight immediately find every inspection report from that time, but I, I know that there was one where, regarding the change from the cul-de-sac to the hammerhead, where they, a couple times, mentioned that they had asked for an engineered plan for them to actually review, and there was no record that that seemed to ever happen that I can see. You know, if, if Jeff has an engineered plan that shows the hammerhead, and then we need to, I mean, we can look at that, but twice this SEA consultants was informing the, then the town administrator that that had been received by our consulting engineer. So to just on the fly out there, you know, I mean, maybe people agreed to it, but we don't, we don't know what was built. We don't know what the specs were, so that's the issue. If the town takes over this road and we don't know really what it is, then that could be a costly, you know, future expense for the town. So I think that, that, that's why we have these safeguards to say, yes, this is what you should build, and then, you know, if somebody, if you have architectural plans for your house, and then somebody builds it and it's not to what you expected, then how, how do you know? I mean, you, you want those as-built plans for that, so to know what you're getting, it's the same thing, just on a different scale and over many years, so. It's, it is common practice to require that, when, it's standard, standard planning board practice to require as-built plans. We got one for, for Roma Joe's, it's, you know, shows the location of the building, matches what was on the plan, and then the roadway and the lighting and everything else that's there. Those things get submitted. We haven't always shown them to you, because it's a straightforward administrative process, and that's partly why you have, have staff to handle that. So it's not, it's not some process that we're just continually asking for more, and that's furthest from the truth.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm just trying to find what we requested from him.
I noticed, I noticed, sorry, John, in the.
There's a, there is a, in the chat, a mention from the Marions that as a resident, I wanna see all the details, including the infrastructure. When I bought the property, the lack of information was problematic. That was put in the chat.
Thank you. Peter?
Why not?
Why don't you be silent?
I guess I just am wondering what we were, what we asked him to present to us. I'm trying to look back and see.
So where do we stand at this point?
Sue asked a question.
What was the question, Sue?
I was just wondering what it was that we asked for him to present this time that is not there. I'm trying to find it in my minutes from that time, but I can't.
We, we, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the exact words, but we did ask for as-built, and typically, as per our regulations, they do include these other elements, which are useful to have in a final as-built plan, as the public record of what is built there.
I'm, I'm more than a little concerned about accepting this plan as an as-built with the inclusion of the retaining wall and the road right-of-way. My understanding is that, that would be a safety hazard if the town were to take that over in this form, and if, if the planning board accepts and approves this plan, I think the town is bound to it if they consider accepting the road.
I have a question for Kevin. Are you representing Summit at Mount Frontenac LLC?
Yes.
And you are representing Hiltz?
Yes.
So, so you, you're authorized to speak on behalf of both of them?
Yes, I'm, I'm authorized to speak to Jeff and to Jeff.
Is there another, are there other members of some, of Frontenac?
Of the LLC, there's, there's one other managing member besides myself.
Well, do we feel we want to continue this to another, another meeting, or something else?
I'm not inclined to approve this tonight without having more questions answered. I would like written authority from both parties if Mr. French is representing them both. Even though Mr. Hiltz is here, if there's another, if there's another party, we should have written approval from the organization.
Never had to do that in the past.
If you were, if you were a single member LLC, I don't think it would be required, but if, if you have a business partner, I, I think that, you know, it's not clear to us that your partner in the LLC would, would be in approval of this.
In, in regards to that, the application to the selectman required, required his signature on a page that was submitted to the selectman, that, that does exist.
Okay. I'm, again, I'm, I'm concerned about approving this plan with the, the retaining wall in the right-of-way without, I'd like to have our engineer comment on that, since this is the first time we've seen this plan with the, the right-of-way, fair enough, the, the retaining wall in the right-of-way. I, I still think it would, if, if, if we're willing to accept a single plan, a compilation plan for the three, three subdivisions that were originally included, I, I still think the utilities should be included, as that is one of the requirements of a plat in the subdivision plan, especially if Plymouth Village Water and Sewer is considering taking it over, or even if they're not considering taking it over, if the residents somehow form an HOA and are responsible for maintaining them, I think there's a benefit to the property owners that are all here to know where they are.
My opinion would be, and I'm thinking to make a motion to continue, but for the members of the public, analogy I can offer is a three-legged milking stool. If you don't have all three legs, the stool will fall over. You don't have all three legs yet, there is more work to be accomplished. The plan we received is an improvement from the plan that was initially submitted, but at best, it is a description of the right-of-way, nothing more. So it is not currently in compliant with a fully engineered as-built plan.
Which ultimately, in the long run, is in the benefit of the residents and not just the planning board, as well as the town's interests.
Can I ask Neil a question?
Yes, you may.
Neil, you've been a select board member for.
Eight years.
Eight years, is that twenty-some-odd years ago, and then recent, more recent, or is that?
Since twenty thirteen, and then I, I stopped for a couple of years, and then I came back.
So have you ever, in your time as select board, have you ever seen a road that's been asked to be taken over, go back to the planning board for, make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, in the planning board process, or is it just go to the select board?
I think this is a unique situation. This is a unique situation. It's, it spans, well, well, Greer started in eighty-eight, and then I think Jeff was twenty-seven years, I, I think, from Fa- Phase One, and, you know, during that time, you know, the economy went up and down, and, and, you know, we had a horrific recession, and, you know, we've had multiple changes of administrations in, in the town, and we, this is a complicated process, and I think, you know, it, it isn't gonna do any harm to, to try to get a little more information.
So did you, have you ever seen an applicant bring a road forward to be accepted as a town road, ever go back to the planning board?
I can't answer that.
He did say it's a very unique.
Yeah, this situation's very unique.
I can say that, in, in recent history, there, I mean, Martin Estates is a private road that was brought to the town and considered for acceptance, but at the same time, my understanding is there weren't any sufficient issues with the plan that required it to come back to the planning board, where there are clearly changes or deficiencies that on this plan that the road wasn't built as proposed. I mean, if, you know, I think the, the accuracy of recorded plans is the foundation of property law.
Absolutely.
Oftentimes deeds will reference plans as, as shown on Plan four, three, nine, one, registered with the county, you know, I, I think it should be accurate.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing. Are there any further comments? Not, not public comments right now.
Just an advice, just, can you please pass the exact details of your ruling, you know, so that we can complete and, or request it, like, because what I was here last time, you were, as is? That's pretty vague, so give me exactly the details of the engineering information you need.
Thank you. I mean, as-built are, I mean, it, it's in our regulations, and they're, they're pretty, I mean, it's a lot of stuff in there, but it's, it's all in there. Any other further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Okay, we will continue this meeting, and just to.
Give them a date.
We need a date, that's what I'm just, just thinking in my head. We have, in our next two meetings, we will have public hearings on the zoning amendments, and I guess part of the question would be, if we're looking for this additional information, going back to the applicant, when do you think, once you get in contact with our staff about, maybe specifically. about, maybe specifics about what we need, and looking through our regulations as well, I mean, do we have any sense about timelines as to when we might be able to get a more complete as-built?
Our next meeting is January fifth.
I don't think we'll probably, I mean, we needed ahead of the meeting to be enough, with enough time to be able to distribute to everyone, and so it might be the second meeting in a month, or?
Why don't we continue it to the fifth and let them ask us if they would like an extension to the 19th?
I mean, do you have any preliminary thoughts about?
Well, I assume we're going to go see the slide, huh? See what they want on it. What I was hoping to do is try to get some of these things not, if there's more things you want, fine, but we were in here for two cul-de-sacs and a cistern, and all I want to know is, is the planning board okay with those locations where we are, they are, so we can move on to the next step? And as far as the engineering, I have no idea what happened to the review things or anything over the past twenty-eight years, or where they are, or what they would done. What I do know is the road has been in there and built and is working for twenty-something years, which is quite a bit better than an engineering plan that says it's going to work for twenty-eight years, so.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't want to reopen this debate right now, but I guess we're just looking for a reasonable timeline.
I do think the timeline is going to depend on what you're asking him to get, because if this is, if you're looking at a lot of engineering, that's obviously a lot longer.
No, I know, that's why I think like the first meeting of January is too soon probably, to actually get this to us in time to actually
Because I think the last meeting, it was the cistern and the cul-de-sacs.
I don't have an issue with the location of the cul-de-sacs or the cisterns as they're built, you know, my concern is about the level of detail presented in the plan.
As a typically accepted as-built for a project.
How can they get a list of stuff?
Joseph, can you help communicate some of this list?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly send the information that's in there, I don't know if June, if you want to speak to that.
We can send the, to Mr. Hiltz, a list of typical details required in as-built plans. I don't have
Eight, nine, and ten of our subdivision regulations.
So she's saying we're basically starting from scratch almost with just the buildings, showing all the utilities, showing?
We have tremendous improvement from what was first submitted to us to what we have here, but we are still looking at an incomplete subdivision as-built.
It does not need homes, doesn't need utilities on private property, it's simply looking at
Are we looking at a lighting plan, are we looking at?
I think what we're going to try to do is protect the legal rights of all the homeowners so that we don't have lawsuits in the future, expensive lawsuits over, you know, if we have a plan that is recorded in the county registry of deeds that infringes upon the rights of a landowner, I think that we need to make sure that all the, you know, the drainage is appropriate and the road layout is appropriate, and we need a little more information.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had this discussion at this point, and we've decided to continue the public hearing, and, I mean, my own hunch is to continue to the second meeting of January unless we hear otherwise from the applicant.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
January nineteenth?
Is it nineteenth?
Yes.
Oh, I thought we have a new schedule.
We have a calendar in front of us.
January nineteenth.
All right, thank you very much. It is our goal to get this settled. And we appreciate your work to get us the more detailed plans.
I'd just like to say that the select board is resolved to see this through.
I think that's, Neil, I think you should repeat that. I think, no, I'm not sure everybody heard you, and I think it's
The select board is resolved to see this process through.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
So is the meeting the nineteenth for the continuation of this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hopefully by then we'll have everything nailed on. Do you want to take this?
Unless you do.
Okay.
I have the old one, it's no good.
Shifting gears, Joseph, are there any informational or pre-application reviews?
We have not received any at this time.
Thank you very much. Other business from members of the board and planning staff, including A, an update on the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant process, the HOPE grant. So we have been meeting every week as a committee to push forward the HOPE grant process, and at this point, we have had in-person interviews with two separate firms, and we have a tentative selection pending contractual agreements and all that sort of material. We have two really interesting applicants for the consultant position, each with very different and contrasting approaches and strengths, both interesting and good applicants, and hopefully we'll very soon be wrapping up a contract with the one that came out on top, and then we'll, at that point, give, continue to give more information once that process is wrapped up. Are there any other comments from members of the committee about? I think that's pretty much where we are, yeah?
It's moving right along.
Yeah.
We are moving along very well.
Yeah, so we met those two applicants on Monday and Tuesday of this week, and then had a meeting directly after, as members in the public of the committee as well, Matt, oh, and Bruce.
Before we move on to number eight, could I add something to that?
Yes.
Other business from members, I just want to make a comment, the last meeting that we had, an issue was brought up about taking to a public hearing with regard to off-site parking, and I feel like that did not get the attention that it deserved, or the discussion that it deserved. There were two planning board members that were not here, everything that we have been discussing, which has been multiple months about changes that we would like to present to the public, it got a lot of time, everyone got to review it at least once, and everyone got to hear the discussion about them, everyone got to get involved with the discussion and give their yays or nays or whatever opinions. That did not happen with this, and there's still two board members that I don't even think know this is happening, and we voted to present it to the public for a hearing. I don't think that process was done very well, I think that, I think we lost a lot right there.
Okay, noted. It was a kind of under-the-line amendment, which we don't normally do.
I hope we never do it again.
And perhaps we won't, I mean, I think, I mean, many of us here agreed to go forward with it, as I believe you did, and maybe in retrospect, we might have misgivings about that. It seemed in some ways like a fairly minor change that was reasonable, and, I mean, this is my own personal take on this, and, but on the other, on the other hand, you're right, every other amendment did have more time to gestate and be considered. The good news, of course, is it is going to a public hearing, and it will be lots of opportunity in January, two separate hearings, to hear from members of the board again, as well as the public.
So I'd like to add something to that. I was disappointed in the way the planning board has been acting. I have asked the planning board on many occasions, even before I was on the planning board, when I was still part of the agricultural zone committee, I mean, still, I still remain on the agricultural zone committee, that before you bring something to a public hearing, you've got to engage with the public, and I said you should have reached out to people, instead you reached out to one or two, that no one knew it was going on. And then, something that was put in front of us last week, we were told, wow, there's two individuals that own property on Main Street that we're talking with, and then all of a sudden, that changed to one individual that the planning staff has been talking to, and there's secrecy going on, it's not transparent who those people are, and we've asked on more than one occasion, well, who are you talking with? And the planning staff has not told us who they're talking with. And this is the regulatory process, you don't work with one or two people to fit the regulations for what their needs are, that's not how this process works, I've never seen a planning board work like this, and I'm, I'm pretty disappointed that the planner or the planning staff, and I really, Joseph's so new with this, I don't lump him into that, but that process, something wasn't right with that. And I bet you, there's some storefront owners here who probably have no clue that the planning board has been discussing changing the height of the building requirements, and they probably don't have any clue that that's even got discussed with the board, whereas five or four members can push it to a hearing in January. We just discussed with two planners, who are professional planners, I might add, who are going to help this town with a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant, and the first thing that one of them said, and she was the most experienced, said, you don't just bring a proposed zoning change to the public in a hearing, otherwise you're going to have angry residents. You engage the residents first, you get their input before you bring it to them that it's all written out. And then they said, on top of that, if you want to try and sneak something through, you do it in August or January, and look at what the board is doing, and I have a problem with that, and I also have a problem with some of the insensitivity of a planning board member, maybe more, that joked after the meeting was over. And that individual had, was very insensitive about how people were feeling, residents were feeling about the proposed changes that the planning board keeps coming up with, and not engaging with the public, and joked that, oh, maybe we can have some other things, that just sounded ridiculous and outrageous, but it was of an insensitive nature, and I hope that planning board member, who I like, would come forward and apologize to the residents of the town, and maybe the board, but I was, I've been in a chairman's position before, and I like to joke around with the board, I have on many occasions, but that was just way over the top, and so
Like, can you clarify what joke was made?
Yeah, it was a joke, well, what else can we bring to Plymouth to stir the town up, and I don't know if it was something that was very distasteful, or what it was, what it was, I can't remember, but maybe the person that said it could remember. The housing committee is now studying, and we put a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant that we have, to look at what Plymouth's doing, what they've got for zoning regulations now, and to help us moving forward. And what we're doing, it seems like, we're coming up with zoning proposed changes that may not even go along with the housing study that's going on. And I worry about Plymouth, my daughter is now, my kids are older now, but when they were younger, and I still have one that's fifteen, but when they would go to town, when they were fifteen, sixteen, before they got the driver's license, it was a safe community, we knew the shop owners, and I feel that some of the proposed zoning changes would affect the town in a, in a big way, and you may say that, oh, they seem like small changes, there were only two or three words changed, or something, but those proposed zoning changes of allowing off-street parking for the downtown residential units to be off-site for as far as what seems okay, could be six, seven hundred feet, could be more, has, has a hu, could have a huge impact on the town of Plymouth, which was voted best small-town main street in America, and many of you weren't here, or Neil obviously was, Sue was, I was, when that designation happened, and we'd probably get it every year if we, if we pushed for it. We have a great small downtown, and people of late that have moved to the town don't see that it's any big deal to make changes that might change downtown, and so, I travel over a lot of different towns throughout the winter, part of my winter work, and I see the downtown communities. We are so lucky with what we have, and yeah, we, five planning board members, or four can pass something, get it to a hearing, hope that no one shows up in January, planning board recommends it for the town vote and the citizens' vote, because the planning board recommends it, and you got it. I say, let's wait, and let's get public engagement, and I fear the reason why you don't want the public engagement, because you're going to find out that no one's in favor of it.
Speaking for myself, I always welcome public engagement, the very active public engagement that I would love to see throughout this process, two things, I mean, part of that happens in the master planning process, which it's hard to do that overly frequently, so we get a lot of that during the master planning process, and to do that more frequently, I would love to see, but when so many here often complain about their tax dollars and how high they are, it's, it's a lot of effort and resources to do that sort of public engagement, and if we had the budget to do that, I would love to, to do it. We have a very, we have a hundred and thirty-some-odd thousand dollar, thirty-four thousand dollar grant, that's going to help us do public engagement for this housing study. It's an extensive process, and the one other thing I will say, again, my own personal take here, some of those changes to downtown, the zoning amendments, which we can talk about more in January at the public hearings, they're going to bring vast portions of our currently-built downtown better into conformity with the zoning ordinance. Much of those changes are actually what's already built in the most vibrant part of our downtown, and it's going to bring that into conformity, which is currently out of conformity with our zoning, as it's written. And I think we can have a lot further discussion of this when we get to our public hearings, unless anyone has a
I'd like to speak to the process, so the process that came up at the last meeting was questioned, and from my perspective, as a board, we should not be involved in the implementation of zoning, but we should be relying on staff, so when staff raises an issue and brings it to us and asks us for help, I think we should be responsive. So the question that was raised to us was that, hey, this, this has come up, you know, there's a three-hundred-foot limit for off-street, for off-site parking associated with, that town staff has run into, and, you know, they had suggested this could be, you know, we could, we've, we could change this to allow for more flexibility there, and the decision we made last time was not to approve that. It was simply to continue, to just continue to have discussions about it, we have the, we have voted to work on it and put it in the public hearing, so, and the public hearing schedule, so we're planning on, we're required to have two public hearings, so we can do those January fifth and January nineteenth, but the date to finalize zoning changes is actually February eighth, and we have a meeting on February second, so we can have up to three hearings on this, because the calendar allows us to. That being said, if we take public comment and decide that this is not the right time, we're not obligated
And we've pulled things before.
To put that on the ballot, so we're, all we did last time was simply agree that we're going to, we're, simply agree that we're going to continue to discuss this, and the involvement, this is not a consensus board, it's, we're all adults, if you're not here, you give up your right to have a voice on that, if you want to speak on this, you kind of have to show up, so it's not, it's not that every member of the planning board does not have to be, to be in favor of this, to go forward. That being said, you know, we have talked about a lot of different That being said, you know, we have talked about a lot of different things that do affect Main Street. The, the, we're, most of these are the Village Commercial District. And while there is some housing there, it's really not the main purpose of that zone.
Do you know who...
I think that most of, and honestly, I, I haven't heard that this was in response to any individual request.
They said there were two? Or they said there were one?
I've heard that from you.
Well, here's the thing.
I've not heard that, I've not heard that from anyone else.
Yeah, I've heard it from June.
So for, for me personally, if I thought this was a change that would benefit one applicant, or even two applicants, I would not consider it. If I thought it had broader applicability and to bring that flexibility, as we were discussing last time, and we already do allow off-site parking. It just allows more flexibility in how we implement that for the, for the ZBA, the zoning board. And, yeah, I mean, if I thought I was going to just help one person out of two people, I, I would say no. But it seemed like something that would be more broadly helpful. Maybe not this year or next year, but just in the long run, just to have that flexibility for the zoning board to make those special exceptions, using their judgment, rather than just one hard number.
John, could you ask June who she's been talking with? Or if she has been talking with, she said they were...
If you have this question, you may ask.
June? Is she on there? I can't see her.
Yeah. I've had direct conversations. Actually, it was brought to me, you know, Joseph's been in the office more. He had a conversation with somebody. And we, and we, to get, talk through a situation which is resulting in a request for variance that I'm not sure if the application has come in yet. We'll have to review that in the next couple of days here to see. Just the sta, I need to look at the status of that. But it was not in response to trying to give favoritism to any one individual or any two individuals. It was a recommendation as we reviewed the ordinance. As I mentioned last time, we do that regularly, usually even weekly, because things come up and we're like, does that still make sense? How can we make this better? I would say, most times, we say, yeah, makes sense. We're not bringing forward unnecessary amendments. We felt that a three-hundred feet is an arbitrary number. And the way it's written, you could have a parking facility on the other side of Tenny Mountain Highway and be requesting that people walk across, when there's no crosswalk. That having requirements that are reasonably accessible and safe is a better criteria. We're relying on, to approve those types of off-site parking facilities. It's good planning. It's good zoning. It's not in secret. It's not in response to any one individual. We don't do that. And I don't, I, I really am disturbed that that seems to be the direction of comments lately that staff is doing something inappropriate. That's, that's really disappointing. And that's not what we do. And we're, we are professional planners, and we are paid to work on behalf of the town as a whole. And we strongly adhere to that ethic. And we are very, very honest and straightforward. And everything we have is open records. I do my computer. You're welcome to look at it anytime. It's all town property. We do not withhold information. We responded to that. We also recognize that recently, the, the town of Plymouth is permitting parking at the top of Court Street, right outside of Town Hall. They have issuing permits now to post office employees. Great solution. That parking area is more than three hundred feet away from the post office.
Zoning ordinance.
Indeed.
While the town does not have to follow that, you know, it's good practice for the town to follow its own ordinance. Clearly, it's a reasonable, safe, and accessible parking area for a business such as the post office. And it's a great opportunity to do that. And it's taking care of a problem on Main Street to help provide permitted parking for an entity that can't do it on-site. It's a great solution. But it's more than three hundred feet away.
Any other business from the board at this moment?
I've got a comment. The Select Board has established a policy of putting a high priority on promoting transparency. And we've been upgrading our website, making videos and notices available, and minutes are available online. So, you know, we've, we've done everything we can to put, put everything out there in front of the public so that they can know what's going on.
It's just weird that we have an application coming in, and then shortly before, we have a zoning proposal to change zoning and to fit one applicant. And it's, I...
It sounds like this applicant's actually going to go for a variance anyway because of the timeline.
But it just seems like when we have a proposed zoning, and they say they're working with someone on this proposed zoning, and we don't know who that is, it's a little odd.
But, but this is the time of year when we make zoning changes. They, they have to be ready to go to town meeting. And we have until February to have two public hearings on anything that we want to put in front of the town this year. I think this is the right time. And, you know, it's, it's the right time to discuss it. If we get feedback from the public and the public, at the hearings, that there's not a lot of support or there are problems with this, then, then we can, we can scrap it. We can, we can amend it.
We've done that.
Or we don't have to put it to town, town meeting at all.
But to have a paper in front of us that day, and we're expected to vote on it, that's not transparent?
No, that's, that's not a vote. That's just simply moving it forward to, 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 to have a, to have a discussion about it.
And we had a vote.
And we did.
I, I think it's worse for you to ask us to not consider talking about that for the rest of the year than it is to say, we're going to continue to talk about this.
No, I'd say have engagement about it.
So we're having, that's what we're doing. I'm glad you support that. Thank you for supporting this.
Prior to the hearing, you engage, and that's what the professional planner recommended in our interview just a few short days ago.
This is an administrative change. It is a small change. This is not worth holding three charrettes for months in advance.
You may think, and I, and I appreciate your opinion on that, but the small change of just a few words has a huge, could have a huge impact on downtown. And when, if, if the goal is, you want to get to this point, and you have to make small changes along the way to get to that point, and remove maybe opposition, but the opposition's still there. And the engagement, you would find it prior to writing the proposed zoning. And I've, I've asked several times, engage with the public. It's not going to cost anything. We're all volunteers here. We can let them know. We can reach out to some of the storefront owners, which are here tonight. And maybe some of them might want to speak tonight.
I will also say, any engagement we do as individuals, seven individuals, is going to be very selective engagement. We don't know the thousands of people, and we don't talk to them every week who live in this town. We know a lot of them. But, I mean, it's still seven individuals, and that's not really like full engagement. Yes, we should all do that. And I agree, we should all do that. But in terms of like an organized public engagement to get everyone involved, not just the people we know, that's a complicated process. And I'd love to do that process. And I don't think we have the resources to do it on a regular basis. And we have certain moments where we can do that more forcefully, when we get a grant, like the HOP grant, when we do our master plan roughly every ten years.
So one thing we did talk about is how changing the three-hundred-foot distance from having a variance, more than three hundred feet, which you could do if it made sense. You get a variance. But if you can go unlimited with just a special exception, now you're talking about allowing many housing units in our downtown because there is no parking. And you start putting in more residential units downtown because the parking issue is now off-site, more than three hundred feet. Now you're talking about many people living there, visiting throughout the day. And we already have a problem with storefront parking now. There's just limited amounts of parking. And now you're talking about all the residents on the second, possibly third floors, visiting, visitors on a regular basis throughout the day.
And we, and we have parking requirements for residential properties in the Village Commercial. And even if those happen to move a little bit, we still have parking requirements. Those don't just magically disappear.
Well, the visitors...
And I think we, my, my personal thought here at this point is that we have public hearings, two public hearings in January to further discuss these issues. And I hope the room is packed full. I really do. And please bring, bring people here. And I really mean that. And, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the concern, and I would like to continue this conversation at our public hearings. One moment. So...
I don't know where those public hearings are, because now...
It's, you have the calendar.
So the, our, our next meetings are January 5th, January 19th, and February 2nd.
So we have a, public hearings, we're scheduling public hearings and notifying them shortly, like the end of this week, tomorrow. It's, we're sending them out.
We're required to have at least two, so 5th and the 19th.
Yeah.
And if we decide to have a third, it would be on the 2nd.
Although, a third, we usually like to make our final decisions after the last one, which puts the timeline for actually writing everything for, for town meeting a little closer to the, to the deadline. But...
Yeah.
So probably we'll just imagine that we'll do the two, but who knows?
Schedule's up to you. You're the chair.
Is that what makes sense to me?
But we have, we have the flexibility with the calendar.
All right. Are there public comments?
About what?
About...
In general.
Public comments.
About planning. But, but otherwise, like, pretty open.
So we are going to be having public hearings on any of the zoning amendments? Sorry. So you, you can, please, please.
Please come up to the lectern and...
Yeah. I, I just wanted to preempt that we will be having public hearings on zoning amendments.
I'm Jane Hinkle. That's my husband Frank. We own and operate the T-Rose Inn on Pleasant Street, so we're not on Main Street. But we're trying to be very active in the town and the Select Board to know what's going on here because we're watching our business grow and thrive. And also, a lot of other things happening in the town. So when I heard about this, what, I don't know what you'd call it, and I'm still learning, so please forgive me. I don't know the jargon here, about...
Proposed zoning amendment?
Proposed zoning amendment for having higher, higher, more levels of like this housing you're talking about. I've been after the Select Board since, for three and a half, almost four years already. When are we getting new sewers? When are we getting new sewers? When are we getting new sewers? Now, we've got more housing going in. It's already going to compromise our already antiquated sewer systems. And that's my concern. So I just wondered how that all plays into this.
Just to clarify, there is not new housing going in.
Okay.
There could be.
There could be.
We are considering, at one of our zoning amendments, changing the way we calculate height on Main Street. We're, we're keeping the same number, but slightly changing how we calculate it.
Thank you.
And what would fill that space? I mean, it could be housing. It could be offices. It could be an artist stu, I mean, imagination is your limit, except for, of course, our use table.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking more housing, more people, more toilets, more, you know, more taxation. We're really stressing out our sewer system. So that's, that's where I'm going with all this thing. And just wondering how this all plays out. Because when we moved here sixteen years ago from Florida, over the years, I've kind of, you know, look around, and I think to myself, wow, my street hasn't been paved in sixteen years. It's a washboard. Streets are terrible here. You know, you live in our neighborhood. And, you know, it's like, who planned for the infrastructure for this? There was like, there was nothing planned in previous years for the growth of Plymouth. And we've seen this place grow. I mean, tourism in the summertime is amazing. October, we're crawling with people. There's no place to stay for these weddings. It's, it's been wonderful. It's been great. But we can't overdo it to where we stress the town out so much. The traffic is terrible, no place to park. So I'm just here to try to figure out. So thank you for being patient with me and trying to explain to me what's going on.
And please come to our meetings in January and...
Oh, yeah, I'll be here. I just want to learn more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Yes?
My name is Daniel Masera. I own the ski job across the street. I have been here since nineteen ninety-five, and always the problem was parking, always. As far as I know, we have only two hundred and thirty-nine parking spots in Main Street, from the Rotary to the pharmacy. If we put more, more housing, offices, studios, whatever you want to call it, where are we going to put all that people? Anecdotal experiences, I have customers, they go around the common twice, and they go to Lincoln and buy there. I have been in parking committee on and off for about twenty years. What we achieved? Zero. Nothing. When we tried to put parking across the street from the senior center, one of the departments in town came roaring, no, you cannot park here, because, whatever. What are we going to do? Put more? If we want to kill Main Street, let's send everybody to Tenny Mountain Highway. Put, put housing there. But the way the town is, okay, tell me where we're going to put our customers, our employees. I'm lucky I have parking in my property, but not everybody is as lucky. The other thing is, in summer, we really don't have much parking issues because the school is not in session. And you see Main Street on, near their parking lot, it's always parking there. But as soon as the kids, four thousand five hundred kids come back, not everybody have a car, of course, gone. It's every single day, everything is taken. Now, I heard this, that maybe we put more, more housing. And people who, they are not going to park off-site. It's very simple. If you go to Tenny Mountain Highway, you park in front of the place you want to go. And, and that's why they are thriving there. Here, we are struggling. Let's fix the parking problem first, and then, yes, let's talk and improve Main Street. If not, we are going to kill them. And like he said, we were the ma, the best Main Street in America at one point. I was a board member of that Main Street, Inc. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We discuss parking at every Select Board meeting. I'm not kidding.
It is the, one of the ongoing issues.
Yeah. We're working on it. We don't have much to work with right now. You know, we're trying.
Enforcement of the meters has been, it's, it's been better. Well, I mean, at, at least it keeps, at least it keeps people moving, right? There's less abuse of the meters if they enforced better, right? And that's, that's been better. Yeah, I've paid a ticket or two. My bad. We're all getting used to it.
Yeah.
Frank Miller. I was the one who did the parking inventory back in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand. And I redid the study by inventory in twenty nineteen, yeah, before the pandemic. But anyway, we have limitations, obviously, of our parking spots. We have limitation of land of the Village Commercial Zone. There are less, there are approximately five businesses that own the property that do onsite parking on Main Street. There are a lot of laws, rules, regulations, codes, and standards that have come about after our Main Street was built. And we are trying to put a square peg in a round hole. We don't comply with parking for our hydrants. We don't comply with federal or state laws, rules, regulations on parking in a Class Five major thoroughfare way, Route Three. We're supposed to have twelve-foot lanes. We're lucky if we have eight. So obviously, this is a long-term infrastructure evaluation. And the potentials for increased parking will have to be vertical systems, parking garages. And I've identified six locations for those to potentially occur. Obviously, with the pandemic issue and other economic elements, we're basically marking time until we look to see which way we're going with our ways, the roads that connect our Main Street community, which being incomplete from the eighteen hundreds, and still is incomplete, will not make any parking increase effective because you can't get there from here. So I have forty years' worth of research material in my office. And the biggest problem we're... we're having now is actually getting the people to think about we, us, and ours and addressing this issue. Because no one person, whether it's the federal government with the post office, state government with the railroad, or the municipality, has sufficient lands to mitigate their onsite issues in any part of the infrastructure. It's all we, us, and ours. And unfortunately, like this new housing study, I've got the housing study from nineteen eighty to ninety-one. Same, same effect. The fact is, you physically can't put additional elements in a small confined area of our Main Street without affecting your demand capacity requirements to mitigate the infrastructure necessary to put that in. So anyway, I stand ready to provide technical data, the federal laws, state laws, municipals, and industry standards for two white lines that cost the town a hundred dollars a year to maintain one parking space. Thank you.
All right.
All the comments still open?
Yes, they are.
I won't stand up here and speak upon the actual parking zoning, you know, adjustment or whatever was proposed. Actually, I will. But I'll be brief with that. That's an iceberg. What we see is the tip of it. And I would have felt the same way if I was on the planning board. And that was brought up to me last minute is, I would have only realized like the tip of the iceberg. It's a huge endeavor. So that's as much as I'm going to speak on the actual parking bit of it. Because I know there's going to be other times for that. But what I do want to mention is the policy and procedure of bringing those in front of the board. And I'm not affluent in that matter. But I do know that if, you know, I picture myself, I was sitting on the planning board and that was brought in front of me. You know, I would have said, yes, let's, you know, let's move this forward. But if I was given more time to think about it, I would have, there's a lot more processing to go behind the scenes. And, you know, I don't think it can be withdrawn or tabled in today's meeting. If it can be, I urge it to be. If not, it will move forward to public hearing or, or, you know, whatever the procedures are. But I think it's, you know, I know it's twenty of nine. So people are thinking, we're, let's, let's wrap this up, Matt. Like, let's get out of here. And there's also people thinking, and I'm not saying anyone on the board, just in general, like, I want to say that, like, tonight, people are like, hey, let's wrap this up. Let's go. But also, there's last-minute policies that come up where it's like, hey, oh, shoot, like, we, we need to like get this in. Like, you know, the, the deadline's coming up. And, you know, if we don't get in this, it's not going to meet public, public personas. We're going to have to put in the La Conia Daily Sun instead of the Record Enterprise. Like, just a lot of stuff happens. Well, you know, that sucks. But if it, the deadlines don't work, it needs to be pushed back. We, things can't be like, and I'm not saying maliciously, but things can't be slid in. There needs to be time and those procedures need to be followed to give, you know, this board the proper time beforehand to be able to process that fact. And, yeah, that's, that's all. Thank you for your time. And that's, that's as much as I have to say tonight. Appreciate it.
And I, I myself look forward to hearing more about the rest of the iceberg.
I can...
I think you're going to.
Another day.
I can tell you how much this parking is going to be huge.
I think concerned citizens should go to social media and maybe it'll go viral, you know, if you have concerns.
How's your Twitter account?
Twitter.
Oh, okay.
Social media should be about tractors and babies.
I just want to ask Neil, where, who and where would I bring up the question of parking, or off-street parking, like in my neighborhood? Is it to the zoning planning, the police department, or to the Select Board?
Well, you can come to the Select Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we have no signs posted and somebody comes to drop something off at my house and they park on the street and they get a fifty-dollar ticket.
You could talk to the town manager. Make an appointment to meet with the town manager.
Who would that be?
Scott Whedon.
Scott Whedon.
Oh, of course, Scott, duh.
Well, he's our new, new town manager.
I'm sure he'd be glad to have his door open.
He's friendly.
As of about a month ago?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Do we have anything else?
Perhaps a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Stop it.
Eight thirty-nine.